Tim, you want to mention how we should be making updates?
Ben Carver stumbled on a nice little option. I think it was last month, right Ben? If I put a Word document or any of us put a Word document into our Dropbox file, we can comment on it directly and then I see it before we get here. So Ben had caught a couple of things prior to the meeting, so that I made those changes. So if you find something in the Dropbox that we changed, if you do that, I see it really quickly. It sends me a notification, so feel free to use that. It works really well.
Any other comments or discussion on the two sets of minutes? All in favor of adopting these minutes as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Okay. Item number four is a public comment period, our first privilege of the floor. We will allocate 15 minutes if necessary to any member of the public who's not already on the agenda. If anyone would like to say anything. Sure.
Is this the time to discuss things or like the public hearing coming up in a minute?
If you want to comment on one of the items that we will be having the public hearing for, then I would wait for the public hearing. If it's unrelated to anything on the agenda, then now's your chance. Okay. Then we will move on to item number five, which is our public hearing on local law number one of 2019, which is an amendment of our vehicle and traffic law. That proposed local law has been posted for seven weeks or so now. And it essentially, the only significant changes are some stop sign placements and some verbiage changes. There are no speed limits are governed by a separate law. What else? Anything else?
Parking. Changes on south between the way you name on way.
Some areas of, which had been designated as no parking, some of those have been changed. So I would entertain a motion to open the public hearing on local law number one of 2019.
So moved.
Second. A motion in the second, all in favor of opening the public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we are now in our public hearing for local law number one of 2019, which is the vehicle and traffic law changes. If anyone would like to comment, please do.
I'm curious specifically about the Lake Street signs, stop sign that's being proposed. My question would be, I guess why would be not to be put up at the Ben Lake Street? And I think you're creating a more dangerous situation than the awkward situation that it currently is. If you travel down Lake Street, you know, in your mind, it's almost like it's one road, right? Dorsey Hill, Lake Street Extension. It's kind of like a, although it's named the same, is kind of like a separate term. But you're so logic, I think sometimes stop signs go against our general logic of driving and create far more dangerous situations. And you're also reversing the line spots. So if you travel now, those corsetia bushes there are not blue. But in springtime, they are blue. And where you would stop, I mean, you would really have to be right at Lake Street Extension to see what's coming down Dorsey Hill. So you're allowing a situation where people coming down Dorsey Hill have the right of way to turn on the Lake Street Extension. And I think that's not really safe. So I just wondered what the, beside the pedestrian aspect that Rachel brought up a few months ago, what the rationale was behind what the spots.
The comments that I heard, and I was doing a lot of work on this, was specifically about the turn coming down Dorsey Hill and making a left on the Lake Street Extension and how dangerous that is. So I tried to drive it from pretty much every angle and turn that I could consider. And that one was the scariest because you kind of, I mean, I'm sure you know, you kind of get there and you can't see what's coming around the corner coming up Lake Street. No one can make that safe left turn. So that was the primary motivating factor, actually more so even than pedestrian traffic. So I don't think this really helps with Rachel's comment. And I want to get back to it some other way, but I don't think this actually does.
Right, I didn't know if that was what was being, kind of addressing that, which is, it doesn't address it at all.
Right, yeah.
But I, you know, I've kind of looked into the traffic situations and we all know the dangerous intersections in this town. Are there any incidents that ever happen there?
I don't know.
I've lived on Lake Street for 30 some odd years.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not a term that, the majority of traffic is going Keuga to Lake, right? If you're coming from Keuga, you're going up to Lake. The majority of traffic is going down Lake, through Lake Street Extension, or up to the U Street itself. I very rarely come across, not that it happens, of course it happens. But there's not that many cars that are turning left.
So where were you thinking with the stop sign on the V?
I think there should be a stop sign.
Well, I know, when you're thinking about, because placement was a big issue that I was thinking about and where that would go. And I think you'd mentioned it, the only place that would make any sense is to put it right at where the Street Extension.
You would have to put it right out, but isn't there, are there, there has to be a setback, right? You can't put it at...
I'm not sure about that.
Is it there like a 10 foot-ish?
I'm not sure about that, but I mean, any other intersection, right? Like your stop sign, I mean, you're kind of, the stop line is a back world, but I think it was quite a relief. Obviously, you want to be far back if you're not getting clipped or anything. But that's about the only place you could see around. Because I agree, if we put anything further back.
Now, that's the only place you could see around, but in a few more months.
Yeah, I think, Mary, this is...
It's going to be dangerous.
I think this is, this is an attempt, which no one is guaranteeing is going to make a huge difference, but it's an attempt at an imperfect solution to a, to a kind of a weird street. And one of the, one of the, one of the concerns was that traffic coming down Lake to take a curve left up Dorsey Hill is that some of that traffic is cheating too much into the center of the road as they take that left.
Which is why we want us, a line help side of the road, right?
And so, you know, without dedicating a lot of manpower to the enforcement of that, the center line is a help, try to stay on your side of the line. But then another thought was, if we stop cars at the bottom of the hill coming down Lake, less for visibility and just for a stop and then go, you might get less cheating into the middle of the road coming down.
I understand that part.
And again, I don't know. The nice thing about stop signs is that we can add them and then we can pull them. I think there was one there, it was on the wrong side of the bridge, but there was one there for some time and then it was pulled. So there's been, we had Chief Nelson look at it and get his recommendation about where it would be placed, which would be after the bridge, you know, coming down Lake. Again, I think the visibility issue is really only solved if we cut that bank back quite a bit, but that's, that would be up to the property owner. If that were to ever happen, and currently they're not willing to do that.
But they have allowed us to cut it back. Yes, to some extent, DPW has been allowed to cut that.
The bushes, right. And I think the only way to really solve it is to get rid of the hill itself.
Right.
But the bushes, I think, my thought again, I like what we're saying, if this is, this is an attempt at something, right? And if it doesn't work within 12 years, six years, 10 years, we can change something back for sure. But that ability to try that, let's see if we can't make it usable from all directions. I mean, I drove through there and stopped at that intersection, even though there's not a stop sign there, right?
Right, yeah.
I was able to see around and if you keep an eye on those bushes, hopefully, I don't want to create more dead spots and more blind spots, but that is tripping on hills here, as it is in your right with that main flow that goes through there, and we're blocking some of that. But, I mean, that left turn or down that hill is terrifying. I don't know how much you're taking.
Well, so is coming off of a stop on Lake Street and going up Dorsey Hill, not being able to see if there's a car coming down Dorsey Hill.
Right.
Trying to take the right way right now.
Right, so we need to make sure that that is clear, right? That is visible there.
I also think you need to be mindful of the fact that we're in a village that a lot of residents have lived in for a very long time, that they don't know the speed changes. I can't tell you, I mean...
We actually had a stop sign there at one point, and we removed it, not in the same position. We're hoping that this position will improve that. But we all have our opinions on whether it should be there or not. And not all of them are contrary to yours.
I just worry about it being more dangerous. And it's rude that I travel fairly often, and to be honest with you, I would be more likely to avoid taking that.
I think that for the most part, you're talking about people not turning left there. The people that have been, lived there for 30 years, do turn left there.
Oh, I'm not saying that they don't, I'm just...
Because I can tell you that's the only way around the town.
Tends to be more U Street, Main Street, up through Lake and vice versa. So maybe... Just as...
So I think the, I think the point being that we've had the conversation several different ways. We left it up to the police chief, we actually delayed it when we didn't know when Tom was leaving, to leave it up to the police chief to make the decision as far as the traffic control was and see, have him judge the effectiveness of it in place. So like they said, it can't be revisited in six months to eight months.
Any other comments? Comments from the public on this proposed local law? Parking rights.
Probably a lot of cool errors.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Are there any handicap parking spaces on Main Street, sort of where Garrett's is and pizza shop?
There's one, which is on Union Street, in front of the phone company essentially, at that stop sign.
That's on that side.
Route 96, what's that?
There's a couple in the parking lot by the...
Oh, we should, there's, there are handicap spots in the parking lots, but on the street itself...
There's nothing.
There's nothing. As with everything we do on 96, it becomes a little bit of a DOT issue if we want to start marking it off. They don't know that they have an issue with it, but...
It's really difficult if you're trying to bring someone that already had a haircut or anything for any reason, and the snow piled up, there's no place to get up on that street there. I mean, it's just, it's really difficult. And another place it's difficult is maybe coming out of the parking lot to the left there, right by the bridge, can't see at all. I mean, not, that's not a good spot, but it's very difficult to see traffic coming towards the right when you're leaving that parking lot there. If there's someone parked right there, you're really taking your life in your hands.
Which parking lot?
Yeah.
Which one?
Right next to the wonderman. If you're looking to the left there, it's pretty dicey sometimes trying to get out of that parking lot. When someone's parked there, there is, there's no way to see what's sort of coming around that bend.
Populations doing well there?
Yeah, I think we talked about that turn when we were talking about the speed and parking spot. Adjustments on Main Street, slowing it down. We did discuss the difficulty of messing with the street. But yeah, I've heard that from others as well, that seeing around that turn.
Yeah.
Especially even some people crossing the, going to cross the crosswalk, you can be blocked out by parked cars.
So if you'll recall probably when the Main Street project was designed in 2005, '06, '07, the designers in their infinite wisdom decided to make that curve at the old Rango by Garrett's sharper and then remove some of the parking spots in front of the bank to add the designer rig field. So that has made that feel a lot tighter. I don't know what the answer is unless we can get the OT to let us slow speed down there. We tried it our way a few years ago and they slapped us on the brakes.
There's no way you get that one spot that's closest to the entrance to the parking lot so that no one touch right there, so at least you have a little bit of view.
You could. One concern we always had is because of the Main Street project, again, I think, took away, was it three?
At least.
Took away at least three parking spaces. There's always a concern about just parking in general down there. So a little bit nervous about removing additional parking space. Really, really feel that if we could get speed even from, well, even from this building, from the Masonic Temple area to say Atlas, down to 20, 25, that would make, that would make a big difference. New York State's not interested, at least, at least not at this time.
Truck drivers.
In some ways, that curve is, makes it more difficult tightening up that curve, but hopefully it scares people a little more to slow down to it.
I think that was part of the thought process, but hasn't had the intended.
Yeah.
Any other?
Sign walk should have been speed bumps.
Any other comments on the specifics of this proposed local law number one of 2019? One more time, any other comments? Only once. Okay. Then I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing on local law one, 2019, the vehicle and traffic law amendments.
So moved. Second.
Motion in the second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Any board discussion?
I mean, we've talked about this, I feel like for as long as I've been on the board, repeatedly and at different times with varying levels of confidence in the solution. So I appreciate what you're saying, and I think ultimately we'll just have to see how it goes. Hopefully this will help. I think it will, but we'll just have to keep a close eye on it.
Yes, maybe we want to put anything down in terms of bringing this back up for review? I'd rather do that than just wait for others to bring it to our attention. I know Joe has an idea, we can talk to him, has ideas on how to track and measure. I guess it's not always that easy.
I'd certainly encourage anyone watching over here to continue to reach out as this gets put out there and if there's TAT, placement issues, we can move this, we can move the sign around within some range without revising the law. And if it really just doesn't work, then we can go back to the drawing room for sure.
What I would definitely suggest is using our website and every communications channel we have at our disposal to alert people, because when these signs come down, they're still, I mean, then it becomes something that can be ticketable if you're not parking on the right way in the right ways. So just because signs come down doesn't mean you can have two wheels on the road kind of things.
Right. I did talk to Chief about some signs we need to put up together, kind of say that, like, all wheels off pavement kind of thing. I've got a sketch of that, so I don't know if that goes to DPW to get that built and created.
Does.
So I can share that with you, we can figure out where to go with that. The thought being, we've got the pole already, we're taking it out to the parking signs. We could put up a couple, like park all the way off the road type of signs.
I can foresee the cheers and more spaces being available, all of that, you're cooperating, you're getting tickets, when you don't park there correctly, so.
One of the things, it's been in discussion so long that I know that it's in the purview of the village. I mean, I know people are talking about it, because people have asked me about it. Particularly Wing Street.
That's another really bunch. Those Wing Street residents.
Oh, they are a handful.
Well then, does anyone want to make a motion that we adopt this local law number one of 2019?
I'm moving to adopt the law number one of 2019, the vehicle and traffic law.
Second.
Motion in a second, any additional discussion? Sure, we'll do a vote by roll call. I'll have a clerk call the roll, either an aye or an nay on passing local law number one of 2019.
Darkler?
Aye.
Watkins?
Aye.
Hart?
Aye.
Carver?
Aye.
Hannon?
Aye.
And I do think we should revisit it, probably fall. See if, see if there's any additional public input, or if Chief has seen anything in particular, concerns in, in actually various parking, south of Wagon in particular. Some people have obvious pull off areas off the street, other people don't. So that may need to be observed.
At least as far as Lake Street goes, I am definitely driving every level, so we'll have our eyes open.
All right, item number six on the agenda is our public hearing for local law number two of 2019, which is our annual property tax cap override law. Which is short enough that I'll just outline it there quickly. It was back in 2011 or '12, I forget when, that New York State adopted this property tax cap system whereby the...
Do you know the...
Are they both the same?
Yes, they are. Yes, they are.
Go into last month's and pull it back up, sorry. Because there's a copy in there as well.
February.
I believe in the...
February what?
211. Sorry about that.
Yep.
So back in 2011 or '12, yeah, 2011, the state legislature passed a law which essentially capped a municipality's ability to increase its tax levy over formula, which basically breaks down to 2% or CPI, whichever is less. But they did allow for an override of that if a majority of the municipal board agreed to override it. We have done so every year since. And what the override does is essentially says that, I'll skip to the important part, the village board of the Village of Trumansburg is hereby authorized, if determined necessary and or appropriate, to adopt a budget for the Village of Trumansburg for the 2019-2020 fiscal year that requires a real property tax levy in excess of the amount prescribed in General Municipal Law, Section 3C, which I believe this year is the 2%. And so I would entertain a motion to open the public hearing on local law two of 2019.
So moved.
Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And so we are now in the public hearing for our property tax cap override local law. If anyone would like to comment. Give it a few minutes, or seconds, or seconds anyway. Comments or questions?
Use the time to expand on the wonderful history of the override.
Could.
We can.
Or not.
Opine?
In case anyone hasn't saw them.
Yeah.
I'll take out part of the slate later, so I'll say it now. We passed a resolution asking New York State to back end some of the A20 or release the cap. And so we don't know if anything will come of that, but we asked them to do that. It's probably as good as we can.
That being said, we have to pass it in advance of adopting any budget anyway, so.
Right, yes, this gives us the ability to go above the cap, it does not require us to. Any other comments, questions, concerns, contributions?
Did we close the panel call?
Second.
A motion in the second to close the public hearing on local law two of 2019, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Then I would entertain a motion to adopt local law two of 2019, which is our ability to override the property tax cap.
So moved. Second.
Motion in the second, any additional discussion? Hearing done, then I would ask the clerk to call the roll of the property tax cap override local law.
Darkler?
Aye.
Watkins?
Aye.
Hart?
Aye.
Carver?
Aye.
Hannon?
Aye.
Okay, we have our, in addition to the agenda, which is Casey Mastrow from NIPA is going to talk about, I don't know if you introduced any, what you and he have corresponded about, Keith?
No, I think I've kept the board pretty abreast of what Casey has presented to various groups. I think I'm counting. I added to the Dropbox what I shared earlier, which are the two proposals Casey prepared, essentially the difference being the smart technology which he's been on. So you can look at those as, as he talks, and this might be relevant to the discussion. But other than that, I think everyone knows what we're talking about with regards to streetlight conversion and this recent offer that's come in a couple of months ago from the New York Power Authority, that's who Casey represents. So welcome, Casey.
Casey Sawyers.
Good evening, everyone, I'm Casey Mastrow, this is the New York Energy Manager for the New York Power Authority. Thomas Kennedy resident, and then Sliderville. And I'm here to discuss specifically the Village of Trumansburg utility analysis for the acquisition and LED upgrade of your streetlight, approximately 201 streetlights. 158 of those are owned by the utility. The Power Authority is working countywide to aggregate small and medium sized municipalities together in single procurement for streetlight projects in which we are able to drive down unit costs for both materials and labor and post ownership service contract. We recognize that the majority of municipalities in the state outside of the Mid Hudson region of Long Island do not own their utilities, or their streetlights, they're owned by the utility. Because of that, folks like yourselves and effectively everyone else across the state has been paying, you know, hand over fist for what are called facilities charges, which are dollars paid outside of energy supply and delivery to buy down the depreciation of utilities assets. The Power Authority is offering a full turnkey upgraded solution at no money down to purchase those lights that you don't own and to upgrade them to LED. The Power Authority, when I say turnkey solution, what I mean is full utility analysis, which is the documents that were in the Dropbox that I performed for you based on your utility bills and the public tariff for a nice state territory, as well as all engineering and design, full procurement of all materials and labor and financing, if that is of interest to the village. Financing is something that some folks have used with us and others not. The financing that the Power Authority offers, because we are a third party, not-for-profit public entity with the statutory authority in the state to offer energy efficiency services to public entities, we don't have... we don't have any impact on your bond cap, so... The most, the longest-standing relationships we have for energy efficiency services are the municipalities and public entities that utilize NIPA services and financing for their energy-related projects and utilize their infrastructure budgets for what they're, you know, more for, streets, roads, and other types of infrastructure. Effectively, we allow folks to do more with us. This particular utility analysis is a line-by-line description. As Keith said, there's two of them. We promote something called asset management control systems. I could speak probably all night just on that, what I believe the value proposition is for those. For future-proofing those technologies, we feel that this is a once-in-a-25-year decision. We feel that it should be done correctly. When I say correctly, as a college student engineer of education, I mean, these projects should be engineered appropriately. The utilities, when offering a utility-owned option to do this, which there are other options to do this other than a NIPA implemented project. However, when you do that with the utility, there is no basis for engineering. There is something called a photometric analysis, which happens at every single light location. You know, the way that your community is lit is very specific based on the pole heights, the distances between poles, how the length of the arms, and essentially the wattage that is currently existing. If you don't take into account all those variables, if you just do what's called a non-engineered one-for-one replacement based on wattage, you're doing yourselves, and are paying a huge disservice over the lifetime of these technologies. And we... So for that reason, and for the reason that we try to empower folks to get help from underneath the utility-owned model and drive those facility charges down to effectively zero, it's really important. In fact, where it's the most important is in the savings numbers. So there's a lot of numbers on here. I could... I've had folks in these meetings not want to address them as a first discussion. I've had other folks literally go through these line by line. I'm happy to do either. But what's really important, I think, when you talk about the municipal ownership model, if you look at a total annual savings, we're anticipating, according to your bill and the tariff, that the village would save as a net value after a pole leasing and annual service contract to save about eighteen thousand, just over eighteen thousand eight hundred dollars a year from doing this project. The facilities charges savings alone from owning is fourteen thousand four hundred and thirty-seven dollars of that total. It's the vast majority savings. The actual supply-demand savings of actually putting the LEDs in is just under, just over nine thousand dollars. So the numbers, when we speak for themselves, we feel that is why we stand behind the municipal model. If you determine you want to finance a project like this with the Power Authority, with the asset management controls, that term would be about 11.5 years. We have created a financing package where this project is cash flow positive to the village, so you would actually, at no money down, if you did this project with smart asset controls, which we do recommend, this project is about seven hundred and forty-one, seven hundred and forty-one dollars cash flow positive. Then with the term, that would be a total savings of just over, just under nineteen thousand dollars annually to the village. Again, this includes the forty-three village-owned lights that you currently have and the 158 lights that are owned by the utility. We would cover all costs to purchase those lights. That's the, in almost all of these projects, that's the majority of cost, is buying them from the utility. But there is no better time, at least in the marketplace that I've been for several years, there has been no better time than now, as far as the utilities selling the assets as close to net book value as we've ever seen. So the Power Authority is looking to work with the village, as well as, I believe, we're up to twelve other interested municipalities in the county of Tompkins. The idea is that we would contract individually with each municipality to an individual engineering design of your municipality, because your municipality is unique to all others. However, we would aggregate all of these projects together, and instead of procuring a project at 201 lights, we would procure this for thousands and then obviously driving those costs down for you. So we like to think that this is an advantageous opportunity for meeting the small-sized municipalities who would not otherwise be able to receive those types of unit costs at volume. And that is kind of where the countywide aggregation model was built. We've done this model successfully into design. I personally have overseen, am overseeing this model in Wayne, Sullivan, Livingston counties. I'm currently also working this year with Shama, Kiuka, Onida, Atsigo, Tompkins Counties, and possibly Brumford in the near future. So this is a model that has worked. It is new, however. This is something that NIPA's trustees approved just last year. Previous to this, they were not working in this space. But myself and a colleague, after working with NIPA for about a year, started asking questions like, we thought this was the New York Power Authority, not the Buffalo, Albany, Rochester, Syracuse, New York City Power Authority. We rang enough bells, and we got this approved. We're very proud of that, to be able to come here to these types of boards and be able to offer the types of energy efficiency services that have mostly been felt through larger municipalities.
Casey, a couple of questions. And you've said it a couple of times, so I'm gonna... It's not a question, but it is a question. I'm assuming that all the engineering that you do is built into these costs.
Absolutely, yeah. It's actually a specific line item. The, the, so NIPA's a non-for-profit entity. This is something that builds trust with our potential customers right out of the gate, that NIPA has no financial skin in the game, essentially. We cover costs administratively, and those line items are outlined. If both, for both of the design and construction management, as well as the project management administrative.
Second question I have is, you mentioned the procurement, cost savings, if you get the economies of scale. Are you assuming any type of scale for these numbers, that if you don't get that scale, these numbers will be higher?
No, no. So the scaled numbers, a lot of them we've taken care of already. So as far as materials are concerned, when the governor issued this smart streetlight New York program last year for 500,000 lights by 2025, the Power Authority at that time decided to leverage our 300,000 lights that were in our portfolio at that time, and we did a nationwide RFP for materials and bought at bulk and drove our materials costs down by about 40%. We offer those savings directly to all of our customers. So that's where aggregation starts. And then the only downside that I've seen so far doing these aggregations is that when you have the folks that sign on first, essentially, wait a little bit longer than the folks that sign on later, I find that there are no greater economies of scale when you get beyond a million dollars materials and labor. That is where we cut off what I call a phase-one county effort. So each of the countywide municipality aggregation that I've done, when we reach a million dollars materials and labor, we cut that off what we call phase one. And that generally is anywhere between six to eight municipalities, depending on how many, but their authority sizes. Besides that, when you get beyond that, it becomes very difficult to manage all of those entities into a single effort, trying to keep the timelines the same through design. So, but that's not to say that folks that wait longer can't take advantage, because those bids that we do, those bid numbers, those unit costs are good for a year. So once we do that reach a bid, anyone else who wants to decide later, whoever takes, you know, this takes longer to decide, or quite frankly, it just takes me that long to get there, because I'm the only one doing this, municipality to municipality, trying to present this type of presentation to everyone individually. It just takes time, folks only meet once or twice a month. So to answer your question, those unit costs are taken into account. We would not move forward until we reach that point where we would get those unit costs. And so once we reach, you don't get dramatically less cost per unit beyond a million dollars.
So then, as a follow-up to that, then, what is the one-year deadline from your bid?
So we haven't done the bid yet, right? So, so once we accumulate...
You need to, you need to scale first before you do the bid.
Scale first to make sure we're not gonna, yeah, make mistakes in that way, so. Folks that were to move forward, so essentially what we're asking here at this stage is for folks to sign an authorization to proceed to move to design. And when we get six to eight municipalities together to do that, reach that million-dollar materials and labor, then we utilize that group as a phase one, and we hold a design kickoff meeting, essentially somewhere in Tompkins County with all appropriate folks, plus myself and our engineering design team, start talking about specifics of going from the utility analysis phase to actually engineering boots up and around, getting these, you know, rubber beat in the road phase.
Can you talk a little bit more in layman's terms about the city touch controls?
Yeah, so asset management controls are a digital interface capability to do a number of things. First is you're able to have a single point of contact for all of your assets at the light level, a single light level, to better understand the, the... What's the word I'm looking for? The life span, but the current value of each particular asset, right? So that's where asset management starts. I'm sure that the general way that communication happens with your constituents today if a light goes out in your village, is that a constituent will call, say, a light on such and such street is out. Your only response today with utility-owned, majority of utility-owned assets is, "Thank you very much, we will call and I say," and let them know. At their leisure, they will come fix that light. At their leisure, I've been told, can be as long or than ninety days ahead of it. So what the asset management controls do, coupled with a procured service contract with a local contractor, that would be countywide, so if you can drive those costs down, it would be securely for the village. The way that conversation changes is, when a light goes out, when you employ asset management controls, you will be notified via email and text directly to whatever appropriate staff on your board. You need to have that information and the contact at your service contractor. So when a constituent calls in that scenario, the whole conversation of energy services changes to, "Thank you very much, Mr. and Mrs. Jones, we're already aware of the problem. We've been notified, according to our procured service contractor, the Power, through the Power Authority for such and such contractor, that light will be open running within seven, ten business days." It's a completely different way of organizing, understanding your data, and displaying that data to your constituents, either via mapping, digital mapping of your website, and then through conversations that you have, such as the ones I described. On top of that, when you install these lights with asset management controls, there's no reason that they should be installed at 100% power. There's no optical difference with LEDs between 100% power and, say, 80% power. So if you look at a light output graph at 80% power, what you've done is you've created a flatline of output from install out to 25 years, as opposed to a degradation of light output after 15 years, just by dropping that at install to 20%. On top of that, when you have the ability to control these, you now have the control to dim these fixtures at the light level. And when I say node, when I say node, I mean individual lights. So I just interchange light and node as I talk, I apologize. So there's all kinds of value there. So right currently with the tariff structure as it stands, you do not get financial credit for dimming, however, in the next year or two, NICE will be going through another rate case. And while LED technology in the near future will not be changing, what will be changing is how these lights are controlled and the tariff structure based on that dimming capacity. So we feel that this is happening right now in Orange and Martha Territory, in the Hudson region, where we're helping oversee aspects of that. Where you're gonna, the very near future, you'll have financial credit again. For example, you have either downtown or more rural areas, right? There's no reason those should be lit even to 80% power during the hours of 11:00 to 5:00 a.m. You should be able to draw those power levels down to 40%, 50%, where that's appropriate. And we believe in the very near future, you should get additional financial savings to do so, although you don't do that. There is no tariff for that now. These energy savings that I'm calculating would only go up when you utilize that dimming capability.
And that's all controlled at the village level, not contractor level?
It's all controlled on a phone. Can be controlled on any smart device. That's correct.
Careful, we give access to that. You got it, David.
No thanks. I'm retiring.
It's not necessary. Obviously, I provided another proposal with just dog dust photo cells. But again, because we feel this is a do-this-and-you shouldn't think about it again for 25 years type of project, this is a way to future-proof technology, elongate the lifespan of your technology and your investment, and also be able to increase the levels of potential future savings and control.
So I have two quick questions. One of the lineups items in here is asbestos. Just wondering what that's for.
There are a number of line items on this. So I'll let me start by saying that this is a, we provide always our extremely conservative asbestos. Worst-case scenario is, if you call, you gotta find another term than that. But there are a number of line items here that may or may not even be utilized during a project when moving from utility analysis phase to design. Asbestos is one of them, contingency is another, allowance is another. And we're also showing, as you can see, a 3% financing rate. What we're actually seeing in the market right now is more like 2.5%, 3%, but I show everything conservatively. We like to give the impression, because we've been doing this for a while, that we take as many things into account as possible, so that we're not coming back to you later with change orders to take you or take me into account. So that is essentially, that is a value, a variable that may or may not even be utilized in the actual project.
And you mentioned a service contractor that would be part of our contract with you. How does that play out long-term, and is that in this?
That is in here. So you'll see two items in red. One is pole leasing cost. That pole leasing cost is in the tariff. And again, not everyone dives into utility analysis and thinks it's as exciting as I do at the public tariff. However, all of this information is public. That pole leasing cost is a cost that the utilities will charge. It's 99 cents per pole per month to essentially rent space on their wooden poles. It's a very nice amount. And the pole maintenance cost is $3,015. That is what we're considering your annual service contract to be, based on other procurement, you know, models that we can utilize elsewhere in the state. So what's really important here, actually, is the difference between the $14,437.56 that you pay now for service, I say that in quotes, because I don't know if you feel you're getting $14,437 worth of service annually from the utility. And that drops to $3,000 based on what we're seeing possible to procure a service contract for you annually from a local contractor. We would do that in our labor bid. We would include an addendum for the electrical contractors that are going to respond to do the upgrade, to also provide service at the county level.
A tornado comes through and takes out three poles on one street. Your service contractor is responsible for replacing the pole and putting the light back.
So the poles will be maintained still by the utility. So we're not talking about buying any poles. We're talking about purchasing fixtures, aluminum arms, and a wiring connected from that asset to the fuse, the disconnect fuse of the grid. The poles will be owned by the utility. So in that service contract, we would have language in that that would state if some, either, you know, God forbid, a W I accident, or a snowplow, or an act of God, or, you know, a divinity of whoever's choosing comes over and knocks down a bunch of poles, utilities would be responsible for putting those poles up. However, while the utilities, in our experience, are not that... However, while the utilities in our experience are not that fast at putting up non-emergency lighting fixtures, they are quick at putting up infrastructure. So, the poles get put up much, much, much faster than, say, a light would, in our experience. And then.
Would they prioritize, would they prioritize their own before they would prioritize?
Well, they still own the poles.
They still own the poles, right? So, they're still there. So, that, so, the hardware is warranty for 10 years, right? So, you have many, many scenarios where things go down, right? So, if you have an accident, then it's the driver's insurance that pays for the upgrade, right, to put that back up. If, for whatever reason, there's a manufacturer's failure, which is usually 110% or 1%, excuse me, those are all handled by a 10-year manufacturer warranty, okay? And then, for any other reason that you would need a light to backup, that will be covered under your service contract.
Any other questions for Casey?
Casey, one question I thought of was, what if, so, what if you get people on board from around the county, you hit your 1 million mark, but we're the only one that wants that asset management technology? Does that then change? Something like that had to be, that was kind of considered for being shared as well? Oh, people opt into that?
No, there's no delineation between needing the asset management controls or not. You could be, the only, well, you wouldn't be, because the Village of Cuban Heights already passed a resolution to do it, but, but there's no reason that you would need them or not need them. We're just encouraging folks to consider it because, one, there's no extra cost. You're already up there putting the LED, and there's no extra cost labor-wise to click in a node. There's no real sense to go back up with a, you know, with a truck and lift if you want to do it later. So, we figured we might as well add it now if you folks want to, you know, finance something.
So, the cost of that is not based on additional adoption or anything?
That's correct.
But my next question was.
The cost is $140 per node for a 10-year contract. The reason that it's 10 years is because that's how long the warranty period is. You don't need to do that. I just put that in there again because I'm trying to be as conservative as possible. For a five-year contract, those are $115 per node.
And so, you alluded to Kaiga Heights. Who else has signed on officially?
Officially, so I've got, has only been to Village of Cuban Heights. We've been at this about a month, but I've presented to five or six other municipalities in the county, and most recently, the town of Drive, Freeville, excuse me, Village of Freeville on Tuesday night, Town of Village Drive, Ulysses is next, Lansing, Cuban Heights, Caroline, and several others I'm not from, not in my memory.
It sounded like the city was an important piece, do you think that?
They're actually, I mean, they're important to the, to the fact that they have the majority of the lights in the county, but they're not necessary to move forward on our project. They only own half the lights. There's about 4,000 of them in the county. 2,000 not owned by the city is plenty of lights to do a project. So, while.
How many lights gets you to that million-dollar number roughly?
Well, it's not a per, it's not actually a per-light number. What I've found is materials and labor isn't directly related to fixture count. I thought, we initially put this together, not this project, this program, thinking that we would have light minimums as the cutoff point, and we found out very quickly that that was not the case. In general, we, you know, I've seen it, for an example, in Livingston County, it was 1,548 lights that got us there, which is not very many lights. You don't need very many municipalities to get to that number. I mean, you have plenty of municipalities in this county with 300-plus lights. It would only take a handful to get to that point. So, the city, it would be, it'd be, it'd be nice if they joined up, just simply for speed, however, it's not necessary.
And I know you had mentioned the idea of the city potentially being the go-to contractor. Remember, that's.
They consider it, yes. And they, they have the opportunity to respond to that, aren't they?
You spoke about the 10-year warranty, and said the length of this contract is 10 years.
The length of this contract will depend, if you're looking at the city touch control from the asset management node, the hardware lifespan is, I'm sorry, the hardware warranty is 10 years. The, the payback on this project is 11.5 years, so this payback would be just longer than the hardware warranty. But we find that if you look at photometric analyses and light up the levels, you know, the actual lifespan of the materials is longer than 25 years, the warranty.
Any additional questions for Casey? Well, thank you, really appreciate it.
My pleasure.
Very, very, very interesting.
There's a lot of data here. You can get very, very deep in the weeds, so trying to match it, it's hard to not get to the line level of these things, but I'd be happy to speak with anybody that, you know, both ends keep having light.
You're making that child.
I know, I know. But I'd be happy to talk to the senators if anyone has any questions. There's really no, I've been asked a lot, is there a timeline? Is there a deadline? And frankly, the only timeline that should be of concern to you is how much you're paying every month to the utility, and then whatever it is you decide to get out from, eliminate that model is when you really start to save. You will save the majority of your annual savings before an LED ever even gets installed, just from ownership. And so, it's really, I feel that it's empowering to think that, you know, the boards have that decision to make, that the only real timeline is your own, and how, and, you know, I think this is all, all of these numbers can be reverse engineered, looking at the bill and the tariff, you know, it's, it's, we don't guarantee savings per se, but the nice thing about lighting is that it's essentially guaranteed savings. This is not a weather-dependent technology. It's water, gin, runtime hours that are determined by the tariff, and light output. You drop that water dramatically, it's very clear-cut, the math facts. So, these are as good as guaranteed savings numbers as far as we're concerned.
Good. Thank you.
So, where do we go next in the board, with this to be, reviewing it, and then we, we have something to discuss the next week?
Yeah, I would suggest that we take the time to review these two, two proposals, and then we discuss it, if you want to have a resolution drafted and ready for our April meeting, we can discuss it, and go from there.
Between now and then, the documents that the power authorities, there's two of them. One of them is a very simple, one and a half-page authorization to proceed that I draft, essentially giving the power authority to authorization proof with each design. The other document, however, is a little bit more lengthy. It's called a MACRA, it's a Master Cost Recovery Agreement. Essentially, it's a glorified terms and conditions agreement. Every one of our customers that we work with signs it. It is 40 pages, though, so we generally, I will request it through our contracts department. You will receive it, or you receive it in your email inbox as an electronic signature request. You please have your legal rep review it. Again, it's not project-specific, it's also not financially obligatory, it's just the relation, aligns the relationship between our village's customers, and we have, you know, tailored many of them specific to the needs, thank you, of each individual in this county. So, I just want to let you know that those will be, and you can have them, and a month is plenty of time, in a term, you know, to have a review.
Great.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
So hard to get the kid excited about local government.
You know, he's the one that got me here. He's like, "I want to see local government in action." I'm like, "I have a light, and he's right, so let's go."
Here it is.
He's over it.
He's over it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Casey. Right, so if you want to get that information, and then draft something short and sweet for what you talk about next week. Item number seven on the agenda is reports from representatives, and we have one.
Where is Nancy?
Nancy couldn't make it. Her report is actually, she did drop off a written report, which is in the Dropbox, I believe.
How was she?
Angie, yes.
I guess that'd be me. Let's see, I wanted to congratulate trustee Darfur on the new addition to the family.
Thank you.
Got a new constituent problem. Let's see, I ran into someone on South Street Extension, so it's just outside the village, I guess, but she has municipal water, and she wanted to know about fire hydrants down there, and so, I don't know. I just thought I'd pass that on, or if you have any, know any information of why there's not fire hydrants, or actually just doesn't see them down on South Street Extension.
Well, fire hydrants outside of the village would be the county Ulysses' responsibility to either, to either install or not.
Okay, I'll text them about that. And I think I heard when I was walking in, they're going to look at a resolution opposing the incinerator, and we passed a resolution opposing that. We passed one, I don't know how long ago that was, when they were first looking at that. So, let's see, I had a visit to the conservatory. We started on the A money. When we, one of the proposals to restore the A money that they were talking about on the state model is to, we've been asking for many years to get the internet sales tax to counties, and they, so they, the state said, "Well, how about if we give you that and we take out the A money after that," municipalities, and it's like, so, we did like that one, we just want to restore, and we would like to get the money for the sales tax online. We have, we passed in the last budget to have an extra person at Long New York, and they, specifically to help with people who might be homeless or getting infected, so there's an extra person to help deal with that because they have a backlog, can't remember, they, a backlog, and they have to turn people away. So, either way, people are getting, they're infected, could be homeless, because they don't have enough staff there to deal with that. So, they have an extra person, so I can't remember, something like, something like 500 people in the county are affected every year? So, that's huge. So, that should help with that, just a little bit. We're hiring a mental health coordinator for the local courts. I believe it's down to picking the person, that's been up on our site for a while. Also, just posted is a head of the veterans services, which is going to be one person in the apartment, so if you know of anybody that might be interested in that, posting's on our website, and one of the prerequisites, they have to be a veteran. That's a full-time position. And I heard that trustee Darfur talked to somebody about the affordable housing, another grant, so I hope there's something that he can apply for.
It's tricky, we're still, that was me, it may not make sense this year, might be something that makes sense a little bit more, a little further along in zoning and compliance and review process, but still talking with EDR, the company that we're working with for that process, to see if there's parts that they feel would work now, and I'll continue to work in the county, to see if it fits what they're trying to get. They're looking for something that's very tactical, short-term, makes a big impact, and just where we are in the cycle of that process, we're looking at things that would be more tactical, maybe a few years from now, so still trying to figure that out, but having those conversations, yeah. And the farmer's market is also having a conversation on the other grant.
Okay, for the park grant.
They should be applying for that hopefully soon here.
Okay, and that, I think it's March 4th.
Yeah, right, I think.
They don't have their grant in?
I don't think they do yet. I haven't heard from them yet. And I think we're supposed to get a letter from the board, from the mayor, so we know what we're heard by now, so I don't.
Because that's first come, first served, so I think that does.
I'll, I'll move again.
Okay. And we have a new director of youth services. Her name is Kate Shanks Booth, who comes through the Williams Opportunity Center. And we also passed a resolution supporting New York State to pass a law that's going through committees right now, that's called Driver's License Access and Privilege Act. And I don't know if you've heard about that. So, that's basically geared at people who are immigrants, whether they're documented or not documented, they often have a hard time getting a driver's license. So, what happens is people, they either aren't able to drive, so they're having trouble getting around, or they're driving illegally, and often with no insurance, and not being trained in how you drive in America. So, we're trying to, we're supporting that being passed, and that also gives them some type of ID too, that if they get stopped by law enforcement, so it's part of our sanctuary policy, so that if they get stopped, they have some ID to give them versus, of course, that's a big red flag, if they get stopped, or they have some interaction with law enforcement, and they don't have any ID to prove who they are. So, then that, so that hopefully will help. And that was it.
Any questions for you? Thank you. Item number eight on the agenda is reports from our various board members, starting with Darfur Fire, CPZR, Farmer's Market, and Newborn.
Newborn's doing, mother's doing well as well. For Fire, nothing to report this month. CPZR, we skipped out last month, our meeting, but our next one's this Thursday, in here at 6:00, I believe. And we'll kind of continue looking through the current grants and plan, and looking for places we might want to embellish on, or kind of reassess as we move through that process. Farmer's Market, not much to report there, though they are hopefully going after the grant we were just talking about, going to add some, last I heard, some lighting, some additional lighting, some drainage improvements, and some other pieces that they've been kind of looking to address in the market. One other, just kind of point of information, not really related to any of these, but we're looking at upgrading all the lighting at this building to LEDs as well, something I've kind of tagged in with Keith on the LED upgrades everywhere. That should be coming, I think, sometime this month, and that might be enough to get us certified as a clean energy community. If that doesn't, then the streetlights definitely will, but that looks like a slightly longer process, so still keeping an eye on, hopefully closing out that project, and possibly some grant funding associated with that, but we'll see when we get there, if there's still money left in that pool.
All right. Thank you, Ben. Next is Enos. You've been the street tree advisory for me, Ben Harper.
So, for the trees, if we did agree that we'd like to officially name Dave Allen as the village's designated arborist and forester, I wanted to ask this board of how we want to do that. I did talk with D C. One of the objectives here is to become certified as a tree student, despite being a village still. So, I talked with D C, who sort of, they have a liaison to the Arbor Day Foundation or something, it's a bizarre arrangement, but in any case, we don't actually have to do, you know, the arborist or forester doesn't have to be a village officer, it doesn't have to be, it doesn't have to be anything terrible official, so it's more aggression of our preference, how we'd like to do that. I'd sort of like it to be, you know, I mean, I'd like, for our other boards, I'd like for the planning board to be able to say, "Hey, we have this project," to send, "We have someone designated as a tree student," so to know that it exists, or for people questioning about their trees, to be able to say, "Oh, they're good," that kind of thing, so I would like it to be public and somebody, but I don't know if anyone has thoughts on how to do that.
The question in my mind is, is this something like a position we want to create and then name Dave to that, or is it more like, we could do a one-off and then kind of come back at it, or we want to change that?
I mean, it would be good, I think, in general, to have someone designated as an arborist. The reality is that he has filled that role for us for many, many years, so it wouldn't actually be changing his role, it would just be giving you that name and being a little bit more official, that so that people will. and being a little bit more official that, so that people were more aware of it.
I think the simplest way to do it is, as we do with naming our official newspapers bank, our individual that we place on the youth commission. Those are unpaid, non-statutory village positions that we establish at our organizational meeting, which happens to be this month. Kind of timing's good as far as I'm concerned.
That, that was.
We'll put it on the website. We'll let all its, makes sense.
I talked last time about a public meeting. We had to delay that a little bit. So that'll be probably the day. We have Andy Hulman has applied for five hybrid oak trees that were developed that Cornell specifically for salt and sort of terrible weather tolerance. So he's applied for five of those to come to the village. I've talked a little bit dusty about putting them in. It doesn't seem like it'll be a problem. Hopefully those will come April, late April. It sounds like the timetable a little wishy-washy. But if anyone has ideas on where to put them.
Just asking you.
That would be, we've talked a little bit about it as a committee, so we have some ideas. Part of that was contingent on being able to take one tree out which is looking increasingly unlikely. So.
In that, they need all coming over the same place?
Well, there's a lot of different approaches to how you do that. Some people like them all sort of in a row. But it's normally not really a good approach. It means that any diseases or bugs are really, you know, go between them very quickly. But these will be, they're all somewhat different and we really don't know where we're going to get species types. It's kind of like, let's grab that.
We'll see.
Yeah, they're all different. They're all sort of, it's just an experiment. I mean, Cornell will continuously be coming up and monitoring that and see how they go. So I don't really want to put them in my critical bases. I mean, when we have a plan, I'll come to this board to let us review it. But it's just on its scene in advance. If anyone has thoughts, places you know that are sort of barren or could use a tree. Mayor has been a nice long drive away.
Thought that other stump that used to be.
Yeah, sort of my log there.
In the Farmers Market area, is there any, like, on the other side of the restroom?
That's an idea.
And I'm not talking five of them, I'm just talking one.
Yeah, yeah, well, sort of between that and the road. There's some space to pull off across from the Farmers Market.
Right.
Which could. That was, I thought about that, but then I was like, oh, every other year we talk about paving. So I thought we'd hold off on that one.
I thought we could, you could.
Yeah, I think we may have, we may have pushed that off with that favor too.
That's why?
Yes, exactly. So now it's up to you. Last time, well, last month, we talked about it. A reluctance to add more impervious surface to.
That's fine.
That end of the village.
I wasn't here last month.
You were the one that mentioned it.
Oh, wasn't I?
Maybe it was a month before.
Oh, goodness. I probably did say that.
Oh, it could have been in a budget work session. That one. But the water tower area.
When it's this late.
That's one of the areas that I was thinking. It's really, because we have the nice gateway, or at least we will be having a nice gateway by the farmers, or by the programs, really. We don't have anything really on that side of town, either on 96 or 227.
I'm thinking, I'm thinking if they're specifically designed to take salt and chemicals and that kind of harsh environment and putting them along either the state roads.
Right.
I feel like 227 feels more barren to me than 96. Coming into 227 is weird.
I think part of it is that it has that like mini sidewalk that's kind of attached and it makes the road feel a little too wide. It's very strange.
Is there anything up by the water tower?
So there's a tree that needs to kind of out there, or not that needs to, but that could. And there's also an old walk. So this is actually something I was thinking about for that, the county parks and grant. Because there used to be a tree walk. You know, all of the trees are labeled in that little area that David actually laid out years ago. Sort of thought about maybe reviving that, in which case something would go in there. I mean, that's one of the lucky places, just because it's village property and it's easy to do, like you don't have to interact with homeowners and negotiate, sort of whatever.
It's a nice screen space. There was a gravel walk, which just never got a second load of gravel ever. So grass again.
Yeah, so wraps up for Zoom. We'll be bringing down some. EMS, I spoke with Alvin about giving, reimbursing us for the money that the comptroller found. And we're still working on figuring out whether we have to split between Mac, Mac and Berg and Hector. Just figuring out where the money goes to which district. I have the option to check in, well, to maybe talk to Lomond and at least do some work with Vicky about building rates. What we'll be getting soon. Vicky did just get baseball registration tabs, so that was exciting. We've done the things. Okay.
Good. DPW Water Sewer.
Seems like I've been busy, but no. I didn't see you for this. Sewer, we did, if you weren't aware, we did have a no-ha clause this past month. The screw pumps ceased to work. We've had a lot of, they got the battery to work, but they should have been on UPS. And they, it seems that there wasn't a UPS working.
What was that?
An indirected power source.
Exactly.
So a generator. We do have, we do have a generator and everything else. For whatever reason, the screw pumps were not included in there. And they ceased, and that's how, that's what occurred. We're now working with M R B to figure out how to get an UPS in there and make sure that we're covered so this does not happen. Other than that, standard stuff, snow removal being what it is.
Just a couple more months.
That's all. Shooting up.
I mean, I'll be away by June.
I remember it snowing in June one year.
2002, I remember. 2002 or 2003.
1973 we got, but.
Why is it snowing here right now?
We're much too young to remember that.
Yes, yes.
Yes, we are.
He wasn't even born yet. Is that true?
Yes.
73, I was not. Be fair to normal. Excellent.
Okay.
All right. Any questions? Police, Chamber TICO.
So police, I will start with. We have 222 calls in February. 222 calls, 10 calls, roughside service to missies. Doesn't appear to have any large incidents to report. Police are actively patrolling our, an issue that's come up. Yes. Trying to dance around with, but yes, fecal matter. It's becoming a problem. Dog walkers are leaving plastic bags of fecal matter.
Because of the, I just don't understand that. Because through all the effort to pick it up and then leave it.
It's almost like, it's almost like someone's punking us. What's the point, right? I know, you know, we talked about this two months ago and Officer Ben Wright did stop someone who he basically felt was promptly in violation. And talked to them to clean up their act. And, but the problem has persisted. So we're going to continue to keep an eye on it. I don't know how this board feels. I mean, I don't think people can put garbage cans in every corner. That's not really aesthetically pleasing, right? So.
Like to pick it home.
We'll hope this person or people curb their behavior. And I got a lot of them.
You and everyone of these.
So, yeah, we're going to keep an eye on it. It's unsightly and nobody likes it. And I don't, you know. We could call for a volunteer cleanup squad, but I don't think that should be anybody's job either. But I don't really want to.
I don't think anyone's volunteering, Keith.
And I know, I think the last thing that probably wants to do is put DPW more out of the job, so. I don't even know, I don't know what the union reps with.
It's probably the outside in terms of their contract.
Has to this duty thing. Duty thing, really?
I want this all in the note. So then the other item for police that Joe wanted me to bring up, and I don't know if we talked to you, Vicky, about the bringing money out of reserve for the purchase of the new vehicle. I think we, we took the Crown Vic out of service.
I don't think it's technically taken out of service. That was a team.
I thought we, because he said it wasn't getting used.
You did.
People did necessarily, but again, he just said it wasn't going to get used.
This would be the replacement for the Crown Vic.
Right.
Yes.
That's going to take two or three months to get.
There is a permissive referendum in the Dropbox if you wanted to move that, Keith.
I would move that. Ben's got it. The board of trustees, the village tree manager, top county New York, agree to a board meeting on March 7th to adopt a resolution appropriating from the police vehicle reserve the sum up to, this is $34,511.10. Joe was telling me more like $41,000. I'll take your number, Vicky.
That's the number he gave me.
Okay, then we're going with it.
That doesn't cover it to do if anyone in a position.
Yeah, do a. Maybe you want to do up to 42? Can we say that?
I don't think we have that much. No, I think the additional is going to come out of police equipment.
Okay, that, okay.
And won't need to be done until the car's here. But you can confirm that cheap. But I think this will get the car order.
He just, I think he gave me the wrong sum. So this will be used to purchase 2019 Dodge Charger and the items to equip the vehicle. Want to strike that?
In the Dropbox, isn't there the contract? And the car's like 25 and change? And, um, car's like 25 and change and we wanted about eight, but I think we did it at nine just in case for the equipment on the car. I thought I scanned.
Charger, it hits in there if it keeps scrolling down.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, you've got, it does seem to say the car is 25.5.
Yeah.
Right.
And the equipment on top is.
I think I noted them before, the 41 made it than before, two, earlier.
Okay. Well, he said this could be today.
Oh, okay, 41.
Yeah, I feel like that's.
40,000 and change.
He may just be on, maybe he's.
No, 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 41, I told you, it's in the reserve. I don't know, I'm just going with what he had asked me to do the permissive referendum for when we had talked about. It was late last week.
Balance in the account is something, right?
Is about, it's a little under $40,000 earlier.
I'd have watched out, we'll need to. Okay, so we'll just, we'll roll with this.
Okay, I mean, if we need more.
Feel comfortable. I mean, if it doesn't, if it doesn't hurt me.
Yeah, and if it doesn't cover it, we can go back in the mound. But you'll just have to wait another 30 days.
Right, you'll just have to.
Yeah.
Why don't you make it 40? Up to 40.
Because there's a.
Because we're worried there might not be that much.
The balance that I've got here is 41 and change.
That's probably the number to consider, right?
In the reserve.
In the reserve?
Right.
Yeah.
But again, I mean, we've just had discussions about it. So I don't know.
No, my, the point is that the number of 41,000 and change is what's in the reserve.
Right.
Somewhere in the communication channels, that number got transposed with what he actually wants to spend.
I think it might be that number.
Nice.
Okay.
Nice. Got it. Still seems super precise, but you move what you want to move. Get round to 35.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say. Round up to 35, please.
So did you move that?
Yes.
I'll send it.
The motion to the second, any discussion, any more discussion from the board on this commissary referendum? If not, then all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
One thing, Vicky, is that maybe we're asking you to write it down before anyone sent it. Would be good to.
Okay.
Or you?
Yeah, he sent it to me, of course, but I mean, I just wanted to bear a eye, make sure I had the number. That's the number he gave me, but I think he was just thinking about the, even if I'm trying to make stuff. Main thing out of the chambers, I was impressed, but there was the Gatorix ribbon cutting, which I think was very well attended. I've enjoyed going there, so if you haven't been there yet.
I didn't know, but I always liked to walk. I like the continuity of Richie and Rosie playing there because we've go see them all the time at the Rongos. Just kind of the same, the same thing, but different.
Yeah, it's been great. Fun, people are, you know, bringing parties and just hanging out there. I don't know if they've started much food service yet, but that's, that's in the plan. Then. TICO, not much to report there. TICO didn't pass a resolution yelling at the governor about steam funding. So that passed. Let him know that the municipalities are not happy to be losing money. I think we were maybe even on the shorter end of what we were losing. Some other regions, municipalities were harder around the county. So the TICO wanted to do that. It's Restaurant Week, this is past week. In case you missed it. It was good. I think that's all of it.
Good. Good. Uh, next up is Treasure, Vicky.
Um, let's see now, just working on some of the budget stuff closing in January. So the budget in the Dropbox is updated with January's closing numbers. I will be off tomorrow and I will be going to a New York State G F O A conference the week of March 25th. So probably if Timmy's not going to have a useful computer, I'll bring this, so I'll still be able to answer emails and do whatever needs to be done. My only is to take it with me. Thank you. I knew you would miss it. I'll be doing that, you know, just doing the daily stuff that needs to be done.
Great.
Ben, when you get a chance, can we talk about the grant and how they're going to do it so I know where, how?
For the Farmers Market?
Yes. Is it through Apricot and all that?
I don't know what that is.
Oh, talk about that.
All right.
Because I have the login for it, so.
And this is the county tourism?
Yes, 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 yes. Yep.
I wouldn't know anything for you, but we can talk and I can get your answers.
Okay.[1768.71]
Yeah.
And I'll give you answers, I mean, like login and stuff.
I'll see.
Okay. I think that's it.
I did mention this, but police wise, thank you, Vicki, for sharing that great information.
Oh, you're welcome.
Take that seriously.
Okay, what can you even have for me now?
I will, I'll keep that computer close by.
I'm on it. No, 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 good, thank you.
All right, uh, clerk, Timmy.
Um, I have been, let's see, spending the last month with my friend Morgan here to my right, trying to teach her and to train her and to get her acclimated to the village and to the office. And then we're still really happy to have her and she shows up every morning, which is a beautiful thing. She's like.
That's the most important part.
It really is, because she walked in in the middle of budget meetings and all kinds of extra meetings, so um, she got her feet real wet real quick with eleven P M. night times. So, but she's doing a great job and we're really happy and fortunate to have her. Um, a couple of things, uh, I talked to Morgan, he asked me to bring it to the board. Um, Vicki and Morgan and I would like to close the office on the twenty-first of March. Um, we will be here, but this place needs to be really cleaned out and hoedow. We are, we have so much stuff even just in our own area that's left over from previous clerks and treasurers and, and just boxes and stuff. And I think, um, between the three of us and Tom, um, we can get the downstairs done in a day and make use of some extra space that we, you know, we now have Morgan full time, so it would be nice if we could organize and, and be more, more efficient space for jobs. Um, so that was the one thing.
We have another shredding dig coming in.
So that will come after, so my hope is that once we clear out like our storage area and all the other cubbies and closets and stuff in the village office, then we will, cause I don't have a lot of boxes to purge this year. But I'm hopeful that by that time there'll be enough stuff. And then I have to believe that all of you probably have things that could be shredded.
I have.
Years worth, some of you. Um, so I, you know, right, so my, my hope is that we would get that done and then maybe late April, early May, get ahold of all the department heads, so we can kind of gather what we have, take a look at how much stuff we have, so we can get a truck scheduled. Because it is scheduled based on how many square foot feet or boxes or whatever. Um, so that we can purge and maybe clean out some things, thank you, all of your stuff, it's like that, cause I am really bored and need that to be done. Um, other than that, uh.
Any objection to closing on the twenty-first?
It's the first day of spring.
It's spring cleaning.
Aww.
Yeah.
What a happy stance.
Can we shred using the wheat?
Long as the posting on the door and the, or flowers on the wall.
I am all about graphic art for you guys.
Um, so.
You can close on the twenty-second, come to my house.
I know, we leave early on Fridays.
Are there, are there any grants out there for digital archive projects?
Uh, so many.
Is that something we would ever wanna consider?
I thought the county did that.
Oh, yeah.
I'm admitting it, yeah.
Well, I.
Worst experience.
So are we supposed to come in now?
Unfortunately, we did start that project, we started that process. Um, I let them take my building, my code records, my building property files.
Good song.
Oh, no, I've seen them, they came back in a disarray, they were scanned upside down, face down. They are an absolute mess, they will, it will take me probably the rest of my lifetime to get them straight. And the electronic record looks worse than the paper, honest to God. It was a, not a good situation. Um, I know some other village offices have been taking their own and scanning their own stuff, and Brown, for instance, spent months and months scanning their own stuff. You just don't have the staff to do that.
We would have to do it in house. I would love some help.
Yeah, and yeah, like I said, I mean, and I know that they sent it to challenge and I knew they were having some, some issues, but.
They have their issues.
And if you saw them, they sent me back, I cried.
That's too bad, cause usually it's, I've heard great things from this guy.
Yeah, the villages are struggling with that.
Well, we're sure it'll bring into fruition.
We actually found it easier.
Training, yes.
To take pictures of it. It is, I found it easier to take pictures than to scan everything. It's so easier now that all of our cameras are.
Archiver scans things in part and those very nice, which is how you guys get your PDSs, but it, it would take an enormous amount of time. Um, we did have a, a grant a few years, well, it's been more than a few years ago, cause it was before Vicki got there. Um, but we did have a grant through New York State Archives, we had a gentleman come down. He reorganized, he taught me the retention record, you know, we, we have a system and it works very well. We do get in kind, um, so we've had summer help over the years come in and kind, we had one intern who was fantastic and she did that every summer and she kept it up. And it's great, um, now that we have some extra help, I'm hoping to be able to keep that up better. But the reality is, is that it's the end of the time. I'm now opposed to electronically archiving them, I'm opposed to sending them out. They're, it's my job to protect those records and I'm not letting them.
I'd really doubt some of us over there.
I'm very protective of my village records.
Right.
And my board.
And my president.
And your mayor.
And your mayor.
And my mayor.
Um, I don't have anything specific that isn't already covered elsewhere in the agenda, so we moved to item number nine, which is acknowledging correspondence. I don't believe we had anything written directly to the full board.
Uh, we did have Alan Vogel's in there, that's who I was.
Yeah, yes, we did. Um. Dusty has been in contact with DEC and is getting some details, which I was hoping to have this week with respect to what they will require, more, more specifically.
The cross division, right, this sort of.
What they will require, he did indicate that there might be some wiggle room on the contractor piece in terms of who actually does the work. DEC indicated that whatever we do on the retaining walls, that the footbridge would require standard engineering plans, which is one thing. Um, there was also a piece which he was waiting for more information on about diverting the stream around the actual area of the work so that no one is standing in the water. But I'm unclear on what exactly that is gonna entail, so when he gets more information, he'll pass it along to, to Deb and to me. Get back to Alan at some point with kind of more concrete information on that.
Just one of those days. I, I reached out to Alan about sidewalk stuff as well, so I'm kinda, I'll do my conversation about what kind of my book like. Kind of like do that. I don't really got a door specific on that yet.
And I think if we can, if we can prioritize South Street from the church parking lot to way.
Yeah, that's my, my as well.
Good. Uh, old business, the municipal update is simply that online bill pay is available online on the village website. As always, village residents can pay their bills as they always have, but they can also pay them via credit card online. There is a service charge of a flat three dollars, regardless of the cost of the bill. Uh, that is paid directly to the third party vendor.
We had a first one today?
I had somebody.
He sent it back. I know.
And say they.
After March.
They felt they were getting charged a percentage, not a flat fee.
That's a flat fee, I mean, he checked her about a fifty.
See, I thought it was a percentage too, so there you have it.
I had, well, they had originally said percentage, but then when I was testing it, it showed a three dollar.
Maybe that's what I'm remembering.
Maybe it's just three dollars minimum.
That was another thought I had.
No, it's three dollars.
No matter.
What you had, yep.
We could better check that.
Nine weeks in charge of that.
Although I'll check with Stacy.
I can check if you want me to.
Sure.
And I'll let you know. Good work in getting it in, thank you, Keith.
Uh, Mary, do you have more speak?
Yep, mhm, and we're keeping the emails till we get them, they're.
They have an email?
You're not getting them anymore?
Oh, I don't know where they went, I got them one day and I haven't seen any since.
I get, oh, I got one today.
And Warren wants to make sure that I get them.
She should get them checked.
Okay, can you check your like spam and all that and see if they're going anywhere else?
Well, they were coming to my inbox and now they're not, so I have to believe they're not getting, I mean, I can certainly look, Vicki, not.
Nope, and I'll check out all this on Monday.
Well, the reports weekly, so that, that appear a bit rough.
I'd put that in my calendar to do equal.
Okay.
Thank you.
Got it.
I'm going to tell you that early on.
Okay.
Uh, second item under old business is continued budget discussion, we've more or less finalized our budget, but there are a couple of line items I wanted to look over again. Um, and then I also wanted to talk about the reserve management there. Ben, Darfur and I met with Jason Fulton and Matt Taylor and talked a little bit more about the replacement cycle. Talked a little bit more about replacement costs. We had overlooked the fact that, um, these, the leases for two of the vehicles will be ending over the next few years and that that is a budget item that no one's decided how that will be managed, one that cash flow is freed up. So Ben actually looked at reducing slightly the amount of money going into reserves over the next couple of years and then jumping it back up with the lease money isn't, isn't going towards the leases. So, two are, does everyone have the budget spreadsheet available?
Yeah.
It's updated in the, the Dropbox files updated.
So we're looking in general?
General.
Mhm, what line? A two thirty-one or A?
So before we get there, I, I did email the board. But just to discuss publicly, I did have a meeting with Helen Talte of the trust company last week and she made me aware of some municipal only rates that they're going to be or have begun to offer on their CDs. So we'll talk about that more in a moment, but if we were to use kind of a CD management program, which Tammy reminded me is before my time, but there was a time when most or all of the village reserves were in CDs. I'm not even sure exactly why we got away from that, other than that interest rate.
Right before the dive, I think.
It was, uh, wait, it, the last CD was the summer that I came and we closed it, yes. And it was closed, we closed it.
Was Tammy with them reviewing CDs, was she good?
You know, I don't remember, I know that the CDs were in place when I, I, I started in oh-five, the CDs were in place.
There was this spreadsheet of CDs.
But it seems to me that for some reason, and it was when John Mavino was mayor, we, we, we cashed them all in with the last few. And I can't remember if it was an interest rate at, I don't remember.
So in any event, it was a very, uh, very good discussion, she did say that there are some things we should consider, or if we were to consider doing some things with our reserve accounts, so I sent, sent everyone an email essentially that the reserve accounts are in individually segregated bank accounts by reserve line. There is, there is no, and I checked with Dwayne, there is no statutory requirement that we do it that way. We can have a, one big reserve bank account and then we can track on our own how each line is allocated. The nice thing about individually segregated bank accounts is there's no question about how much should be in a particular reserve line. The downside is when you have a reserve line with fifteen thousand dollars in it, if the CD minimum is fifty thousand dollars, you don't get to invest that money. If we pool all of the reserve funds in one bank account and then track each reserve line on our own, then as far as the bank is concerned, there's just one pile of money and we can use CDs and ladder them as, as we see fit. I did put in the Dropbox my, um, CD management template spreadsheet, which is, is still in a draft form. And I can, if the board is willing, then I can move towards doing this by our June one fiscal year beginning. Show Vicki how I've structured it and then it would give us the ability to earn anywhere from one and a quarter to two percent currently on some of that money. It makes a big difference in funds like water. If we have, for instance, a hundred thousand dollars on that water debt service fund for the, for the water tanks, we decide not to use it one year, well, that gives us a year to decide what to do with it again. So while we're earning eight basis points, so what you do to that, eight one-hundredths of a percent. We can now earn two percent on that money, starts to make a difference. Sewer is the same way, we have a sewer rate stabilization reserve, if we don't tap into it, there's nothing to potentially draw out of it for another year. So it ends up making a difference of, or as much as a twenty-one to twenty-five thousand dollar difference. Which is not nothing. And so unless there's any, I mean, unless there's any, I don't, we need a resolution to do that.
Close off the account.
Cause the reserve lines are still.
We need, we would need a resolution to close all the accounts and a, a resolution to open every CD.
Okay. Uh, if there's, so there's no, um, objection to me moving forward and figuring out what we need resolution wise, work with Dwayne. Cause I think the resolution of the CD might be more generally, might give the authority to.
Yeah, yeah, it's just, and then your account.
It doesn't have to, doesn't have to be each individual CD.
Oh, I don't know, we have to ask Tammy.
So, my only, my only request is if we're gonna go ahead and do this, which I think is the wisest thing to do, is that we actually have the reserve balances monthly. Because there will be nothing that shows us specifically what we're, what we have in our own accounts unless we track it monthly.
You want the spreadsheet for the reserves monthly?
For reserves monthly, that's easy.
Yeah, I guess that was my only question.
It's the only way we're gonna be able to.
Yeah, because Tommy said, well, how much money you have in reserves?
Well, we got a million dollars, but who knows how much I have in reserves.
So trust the process, we're sure of a key. Yes.
And Dwayne says the water and sewer can go in, there's a general fund reserve?
No.
No, we have to go in.
They have their own, they each have their own reserve.
So, so my only question is how you allocate this, so would this just go back to general, this goes to, or does it have to be go back into those reserves based on proportion?
So not only do the interest earnings have to stay in the reserve account, they have to be allocated to each line proportionally. So you have to have a start point, which would be June one. And we would see what, after this budget allocates new money to those reserves, that would give us new balances. And then we have to have a percentage breakdown. And then the spreadsheet, or Tammy mentioned QuickBooks can do it too, QuickBooks is basically Excel with a lot of fanciness to it. Now tracks going forward, interest earnings are allocated to each reserve fund on the same proportionality. Now, there is a way to account for earnings on reserves in our general budget revenue via budget modification. Which is one of those things that we'll figure out if and when. But with that being said, if we go back to the budget itself.
There was already a line.
Interest on reserve accounts is A twenty-four oh-two, we had put ten thousand in, we could, if we want, depending how conservative we wanna be, bump that up to as much as twenty. Or split the difference and make it fifteen, or leave it at ten, to see how it goes.
Except that that money isn't being like allocated to individual reserves. Which brings that very.
That's a safe story, if you know what's going.
So.
It's still, it's a new challenge, I know.
Don't wanna glaze eyes at nine o'clock on Thursday night, but if the, if we start with the June one fiscal year, you go June one to May Thursday. CDs will earn over that period of time in reserves. And you're essentially doing the year-end budget modification on how much was originally allocated to the reserves from our expense line here, backing that number down for the next budget year to leave more money in general than would otherwise have been left in general. to leave more money in general than would otherwise have been left in general due to the reserve allocation.
Sure, I follow that, but effectively this.
You're rolling over, effectively you're rolling over the, the interest, right? On the CD. So what you can't do on your regular budget line, you can do with interest, apparently.
Something like that. And our friends in the comptroller's office. It's, it's.
So we all have friends in the comptroller's. It's, it's actually, it's gap counting when, when it comes to that.
I think it's great, but I think you're probably.
That's amazing.
Someone embarrassed that we don't have it on.
Come on, interest rates at zero, so there hasn't anything to work on.
So if, if for no other reason, this is why we should be paid.
Yeah, I think this is why we're in this town.
Um, let's just make it, let's make that revenue line fifteen thousand just. Because I like that.
Does that even take five off the, um?
Nope. Um, and then down back to the, back to the fire reserve question. The fire apparatus reserve, A two thirty-one. Ben's new calculations has us being able to drop that to one point twenty-five for the next couple of years till the ladder truck leases, uh, pins.
From one forty to one twenty-five?
Correct. The other conversation Ben and I have had, and we haven't run this by Keith, but. I actually don't know that I need to or we need to, is. There's a simplified, um, replacement cycle spreadsheet, which I think is in the Dropbox, but I'm not sure. Where the chief's vehicle is considered apparatus. It's still a fire department vehicle. So rather than continuing to break out that line, I'm suggesting that we put it back in. Do you have this in the file? What are the next issue?
It is the capital replacement cycle in the.
In Dropbox.
Folder is, has the simplified one in there.
So in the fire reserves tab, you'll see that the bottom set of numbers is only apparatus.
Uh, which, where are we looking at this?
In the budget folder for nineteen twenty, the capital replacement cycle, and then to the fire reserves tab.
I don't know, you were, I asked a point here, do you see it?
The fire reserves tab towards the bottom. Those are the same numbers as the, same replacement cycle, same vehicle, same costs, same, same sale prices when we can get it. By the way, we reduced all of the sale prices. One of the things Fulton and Taylor mentioned was if we extend replacement cycles out to twenty-three years, for instance, we might get a little bit less for the sale of the old fire truck. So we used a much lower estimate for what we might get for the sale. Stuck with a higher end of the purchase price scale for the new vehicle. Uh, and then combined or moved the chief's vehicle into this. So it's just another piece of apparatus. I like the idea of doing it that way for a couple of reasons. One, it's still a fire department vehicle. Number two, what if a chief, potentially even the next chief says, I don't need the vehicle? Now we would have a dedicated reserve line for a vehicle we can't use that money for anything else. Because it's, it's, it's stuck there. So with that in mind, I would actually like to drop, completely drop the fire utility vehicle reserve as a separate line item. See a good reason to keep it. And simply combine all fire department vehicles into one one reserve.
But leaving the apparatus at one twenty-five, not with one thirty-two?
Correct. Okay, then the last, what was ours?
So which, that's the utility vehicle reserve?
Uh, two thirty million, yeah.
I don't know that I followed, but I'm looking at the fire reserve apparatus, utility vehicle.
So it's not exactly one for one, but the idea is that instead of having this more complicated setup, we just collapse everything down into a smaller number of lines and the utility vehicle just rolls into the apparatus.
All right, uh, okay. Um, I have a question. Do you, at the end of this, do you want to do a resolution for me to close that account now and put it into the apparatus line? Okay.
He doesn't have a backup coming up this year. Are we getting a pickup this year?
No, I think we see a pickup this next year. We put a. Twenty nineteen, one.
I'm not sure, but something in, um, huh, well, the pickup comes out of apparatus anyway.
Right, sorry, yes. So no, yeah, the chief's truck's the only one. Did that, the only thing, and it's already sold and the money is already back in there, right? So I don't think there's any.
Right, when I was saying, where do you want to do a resolution tonight to close that?
Right, yeah. But, right, yeah, I don't think anything's gonna happen with that.
Okay. That's fine. Yep, okay.
Uh, and then the EMS capital reserve, next line down. It was fifteen, we dropped it to ten. Particularly given our overtime issues in EMS. Last year was the first year we put anybody in that, because we thought we were gonna try to save enough money to build a new building. I'm inclined to either drop it to, I don't know, cutting it completely, because we just will use that money towards your doorknobs on the new building if we ever get funding for something like that.
I mean, at this point, we're in like engineering study type money. This is more, more than the actual building.
That's true.
Aren't there lines for that though? That's why, like, I brought this up previously.
Well, there is the renovation line.
There's the renovation.
Right. Just wondering about that. I was.
Although, the EMS doesn't renovation.
Well, yeah, it does. There's ambulance renovation.
That's it.
And fire are a renovation. And there's also station maintenance for both.
Well, station maintenance is their toilet paper and.
Oh, okay.
That kind of stuff.
Thank you, yes.
Where the renovations with the, you know, engineering costs.
Right, so there's a renovation line for both, and then there's also that capital management line.
So I would be inclined to keep our contribution to that line, um, for whatever purpose it ends up being used for, the same as last year, which was five. Rather than bumping it up.
I don't think that makes much difference, to be honest with you. It's really. We'll see what we can do and hopefully.
Which?
You know, we can, we can get someone to lay us a grant or something for that. It's not, we're not buying a building, you know, right today, so whatever we can bring out of it is whatever we can bring out of it. It's not, there's no specific intent there.
Zero, can we make it five?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Which brings me to, uh, you've seen that Nancy's mentioned it before. The bridge renovations of the cemetery road bridge is, is very real. My is there, close to a million dollars. Ulysses has accepted the funding. And now there's some decision, even though I don't know that we'll even have much to say, that there's some decision making about, there's a local cost share piece. When the Lake Street Bridge was redone in two thousand, or two thousand one, the village had a portion of the cost share, even though technically the county owns the bridge and the town bears some cost share piece. Uh, the village had to pay, I think it was fourteen thousand and change.
What year was it?
Two thousand, two thousand, two thousand one?
It's a bad year.
Well, the bridge itself, it says.
The bridge is, yeah.
Yeah, the.
Next one.
Um, so we should probably budget something, ten or fifteen thousand dollars for what could become a village cost share. We had a line, once upon a time, which I think still exists. Yeah, it's A fifty-one twenty point four, bridges contractual, which I think is from Lake Street. We've just never used it.
I thought that it was, I, I actually thought that we had no bridges that we were responsible for. So I ended, I think at some point, thought I was pulled that out entirely.
Villages are not allowed to own bridges.
Right.
But when New York State comes in and redoes a bridge, they can, they can say you have to pay for a piece of it. Now, in this particular case, the money to pay for the bridge is mostly through this grant.
Right. I thought it was minimal, it was a minimal cost.
Yeah, it's, it's a small number, but because it's technically within the village round boundaries, we may have to pay for some of that. Liz Thomas is working with the county to try to get the village off the hook. But I don't know how, how that can possibly be. So I think we should, in that bridges contractual line, I think we should put something there, say ten or fifteen. Ten is a nice buffer, because if we have to come up with an extra four or five, we can find that in fund balance. So I'd say I'm hoping to, suggestion as to whether we make it ten or fifteen.
They, did, did what you sent us, it was like fourteen, was it?
Fourteen and change. With that fourteen and change number was from Lake Street Project.
Uh, the bridges, I don't know if it says they're kind of boldish. Is that like a good number to go by or we can get radically different sized?
Uh, I haven't had a chance, it's all upstairs in non-digital archive format. Uh, I haven't had a chance to see what the project cost was. Cause if, if, if it's apples to apples in project cost, then yeah, that would be a good number. If it's not, and by the way, that bridge, that Lake Street Bridge project is part of where our stop sign Dorsey Hill issue comes from, with the way they designed the curve.
God, I can't believe it's not on or not.
Just seems, just like yesterday.
Well, it's, it's. So I forget because you were little.
So let's, less than just as, as a placeholder, let's put ten in there.
What was the line again?
It's not, I don't think it's, it didn't matter. It's a new one. It'd be fifty-one twenty-one point four.
I haven't pulled it up then, cause I still haven't.
I probably just forgot it was that one.
We'll never know where did you get it. Okay.
Uh, my line.
Uh, and then I'll ditch it tomorrow.
Okay.
So I, I do have a question. I don't know if you know the answer. Is that the, the connector to the bridge on both sides, is that, does that continue to be ours?
So that heaved area is, is dusty from Lake Street.
Well, fortunately, it's on the spring pavement, but.
So then I will work with Dwayne on the CD management details before we make any actual changes. We should have that, we'll have that for April, that's our budget. Uh, anything else on budget?
Um, so it is worth pointing out, the, uh, what is the line called? The billing month for EMS.
Yeah.
We'll see if the updated spreadsheet, Vicky has put more of our billing information in that number. I don't know if you all remember, but you emphasized that it was not a real number. It is going down. I believe the one in the Dropbox is fifty-nine, but you said it was actually sixty-eight or something.
Yeah, cause they changed it to seven months instead of eight months, because that's really all we've collected.
So I mean, like I said in the report, we're gonna go back and hopefully try and figure out a way to go about raising that number. But it's worth pointing out that we raised our fees for, uh, last year. And it looks like it made zero impact. So we'll see, we'll see if Lannett has any suggestions on how to do it. I'm afraid we may just be running into a call on the issue more than anything else. But I'll take a look at it. I just want to bring your attention.
Maybe running into a reimbursement rate issue too.
Right, yeah.
If they're gonna reimburse what they reimburse and we're not billing and collecting the difference where our banks does, then that's one issue. But the mileage would be then a place where we might be able to make up some.
There's a cap on mileage too, though.
No, I think, uh, double check that, because I think Medicare, specifically Medicare and commercial pay the mileage that we bill.
I checked last year. There is a cap for mileage too.
But we have the cap.
I, we're way above all of the caps.
Looks true that we are on the mileage.
I can, I can double check, but I'm.
Double check, double check the mileage. I think, I feel like the mileage is where we have some wiggle room left.
I think we used.
That's just a thing that Brian used to say. I don't think that's.
Well, that's my name.
Yeah, I'll, I'll explain that, because I need to talk, I just have been meaning to ask her if she has any suggestions, just because. Yeah, I thought last year we had a good, a good jump on getting that number up, and it seems to not be the case, so. We'll see, I'll report there.
Okay.
And we've canceled the meeting on the twenty-first.
Correct.
Okay. So, done with budget?
Um, good morning. Anything else on budget? Item number eleven.
Go, man, go.
Uh, new business. We have had some discussion and it's not necessarily an urgent issue, so it's okay if we wanna think about it. Uh, there are some updated quotes in the Dropbox on the phone system for the main office. I do have it in mind that, uh, there are some efficiencies to be picked up by having more functionality on the phone systems, particularly with the ability for someone who's in the middle of something important to be able to not have to pick up the phone for a phone call for that person to have a voicemail that it can be sent to. And, uh, I would like to have all calls incoming and outgoing from the village main office recorded. I believe for a number of reasons, some of them, many of them, most of them legal, it would be a good idea for that to happen. I can imagine there may be some pushback on that front, from some members of the public. On the other hand, for the protection of all, both residents and village staff, I can see a lot of reasons why we may wanna have access to conversations. The quote in the Dropbox includes the ability to do that.
The ability.
The new one. Both of them.
The new one.
Both of them, actually.
We would need to have, um, how long we wanna keep recordings would depend on Jeff Burns setting up a server for us to start. We're unlikely to need or use much voicemail, except for when someone leaves a message for, um, say Tom, because it's not his thing in the office. I think it's nice to be able to have anyone pick up and then put someone on hold and send them the phone call rather than yelling across the hall, hey, Tom, we got a call. That kind of thing, but.
It works.
Yeah.
It's not very professional.
Works best.
But if, that's as long as you're within shouting distance. If, as we've discussed, there may end up being too many people, and somebody's upstairs, you need to be, transfer calls.
So I'm, I'm actually not looking to act on this tonight, but I would like the board to give serious consideration. It's about five thousand dollars. I would be taking it out of, um, the village office building reserve. So we would need a permission of reference for that. But over the next couple of months, I think, um, it only takes, in my experience, it only takes one or two instances of being able to go back to a recording and say, or, or find out what exactly did I tell that person? Uh, or what exactly did that person say to me? To.
Of what I didn't say?
Remove a whole lot of, um, potential issues.
And the recording system is a whole lot cheaper than the weekly system. And the recording system is a whole lot cheaper than the legal system.
Sometimes they go hand in the kitchen, unfortunately.
Certainly, but.
So give that some thought, if you would, and if anyone has any initial reactions. We can, of course, we can chat about it, but.
You're talking to a bunch of people that are in tech, and you're gonna worry about a phone system that.
For the past 45 years.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We were doing this seriously.
Well, you and I are the probably.
35 years ago.
You and I are probably the only people who write and who speak on recording lines. That's, that's, tech guys will wire anything up, but they're maybe not.
And I don't.
Maybe not every conversation was recorded.
Care. They have enough time to listen to what I'm talking, or do it. I could see what could be useful, for sure.
I guess that would be my own session, what do you guys think of that?
I love it, because when people can stop telling me what I said.
What did you say?
I didn't say it is what it is, I can tell you that.
So will, with some of the calls, will there be like a menu? And then they hit, I want the clerk, and then we'll get, this could maybe be recorded.
This system will allow for that.
Or it's just gonna be on whoever answers to remind them first.
For zoning and code enforcement press free, you know, we can certainly set it up that way. I had envisioned it that way.
And for all calls on these lines are recorded, period.
Yeah, that's what I, that's what I was thinking, that, because you don't, I feel like you don't want to put staff in a position to have to remember every time they get a phone to remind them first. Or maybe they're recorded, and then if you don't remind them, they get reported, is that a problem?
We live in a one-party state, which means you only need the consent of one party to record a phone conversation in New York State. So technically.
That's great.
This is one good time.
This is no big problem.
Yeah, it's a one-party consent state, which means there's no notification required. However, it's a nice courtesy, that's why you hear it. Now, every state is different, which is why when you call your credit card company, they don't know what state you're calling from necessarily, you hear the recording. So I think it makes sense, it's a good idea to have the notification, particularly if we have a resident who winters somewhere else and they happen to be calling from a two-party consent state.
And you need to, I think it needs to be on the website, it's published, everybody's notified.
Should we also have a change that we, you know, we save emails and stuff? Facebook logs, everything.
We're expected to save emails.
You have to do it.
All of them. So let's, let's think about that with some, some expectation that we'll decide on it in April, whether or not. Second item of new business is a draft letter that Keith put together. As we're all aware, there's a proposed garbage incinerator. Be proposed for Romulus. As Ben Carver will be quick to point out, I rarely, if ever, step outside the comfort zone of not weighing in on issues in other municipalities. But we did make an exception when we joined, or when we filed an amicus brief in Trident's fracking ban case. And that was particularly and specifically due to the concept of, or in support of municipal home rule. This, my, I asked Keith to draft a letter. My sense of it is that these bills pending in Albany lean heavily on the desire to protect home rule. And so any, this letter, if we decide to send it in support of these bills, is coming from that ban as well. Now, the actual letter does talk a lot about the fact that I didn't realize how much of a percentage of New York City's garbage comes this way.
Yeah, it's certainly can be tailored to be more, more home rule focused. And so the history of this is, they said it was proposed, there was a focal kind of resolution that went around, that we joined early 2018, or summer 2018. And that was kind of pushing the state legislature to have something before the end of the recession, which the Senate did and Assembly failed to do. So that bill made the guy on the table, and now there's two new bills, both, one in the Senate, one in the Assembly, that are identical, but at different numbers. And it's, it's, it's interesting in that. I mean, I looked into it pretty closely, because I was kind of curious why, why an environmental issue has such strong bipartisan support, we don't see that. And so I think it's the mixture of the home rule with the concerns with the environmental impact. Neither side of the aisle really likes what's happening. But I think everyone also respects that particular links. Very, you know, sacred terms of art. And grow tourism there.
Actually, the amount of 252,802 dollars and 45 cents.
I moved that we paid as abstract to leave out a 252,802 dollars and 25 cents for the general.
Second.
Not, is a three gallons of water really 38 dollars? That's the first item on there.
A complete use.
I'm confused too. I imagine 38 dollars somehow, but it's stuck at that stuff. Keep your volume.
Is that a, is that a three?
Is it police? It's for the water cooler, the police department, probably. Yes. That's what it is.
Okay, so for the cooler itself, not for three gallons of water?
No, no, but they're three gallon.
And one of them is 38 dollars?
Yeah, that's what they said.
What?
They buy water.
Well, how much is one of those?
We sell water.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Just say 10. With the abstract numbers.
Five, seven, nine.
Why you would get by.
Well, that's the best.
That's what I meant. Because it cuts into the fire? Yeah, they cut a lot of the fire. But you couldn't buy the bottles and fill them up.
Check it out.
Water cooler, you sell it. You don't have to buy the bottle.
You can stop, just walk.
I would have never thought. Maybe we'll, maybe it didn't be 38, it's 3. Never mind, I don't really.
We'll be, Keith, you were talking to Joe about that?
Sure.
38 dollars for four is not bad, but. I can buy with that.
It is not, it doesn't.
It's a long time ago.
That makes sense.
Yeah. It's in the villages, 525 per thousand. So 50 dollars for three gallons.
Just give them a water.
Anything else under the general fund abstract? So we have a motion in a second, then if there's no other questions, then all in favor of paying a general fund abstract, please say aye.
Aye.
Water fund abstract, a new one of 55,336 dollars and 94 cents.
We approve that all our contracts.
Second.
It's actually ironic because my feet are cold.
Good.
Any comments on the water fund?
You guys aren't allowed to sit together anymore. Like the board.
A water main breaks.
Yeah.
I have recalculated, based on these numbers, how much it costs to repair a water main break. And it would not take 400 years to recoup the cost of replacing all our water mains. It'd take 180 years, in case anyone's keeping track at home. Doesn't take.
Save a little, a hundred years?
180 years. Doesn't take as long as I thought it would. Any other water funds?
So is that new business?
Could be.
It's gonna take longer than it takes for the new water system to break down.
We tell the fire service to re-fund the whole of it. Oh, God, no.
When was the village incorporated 1872? Right, so, maybe even around 180 years, yeah.
We about to bind the hands of each board.
Something.
1892, really?
1872.
The house was only in the village, we have to.
All right, if there's nothing else on the water fund, then all in favor of paying it, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. I think she's there. Sewer fund abstract, 179,898 dollars and 22 cents. The bond payment.
Yeah, I'm a little worried about it. I moved that we pay 179,898 dollars and 20 cents through sewer fund.
Second. We'll shoot you the second, any discussion? No, no, sorry, Dwayne.
Vicki, when do we pay the parks? New York State parks are 43K. Come at the end of March, I'm back to the water vault. All right, thank you. No, I'm done, sorry.
All in favor of paying the sewer fund abstract, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. We have an EMS billing abstract, an amount of 62,926 dollars and 76 cents. Second, any discussion? No, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions.
We do ourselves. Sorry.
We pay it.
Yes. Billing, billing revenue comes into, into one account.
Oh, here, Scotty.
Last but not least, trust and agency abstract, an amount of 75,202 dollars and 35 cents. This is our double health consortium month, based on where the calendar falls. Let's add a couple of double payments.
Who do we pay the trust and agency abstract?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions.
Actually, I do have a question, but it would stop me from recording it. Why is the, how is the payment to the consortium different month to month? Because we added people. It was our two officers when. Come on, you. That's fine, thank you. You're welcome. Answered it. Except that it's cheaper in April. It's because we were doubling up to, because they go retro prize. So when the officers came in on February 7th, they had, they had ketchup, so.
They already paid for February.
Right, so they were paid with the, right, so they paid a couple of their deductions with ketchup. Got it.
Okay, item number 13, second public comment period, privilege of the floor, if anyone would like to comment on anything. Now's the time.
Nice agenda, sir.
Show me once. Twice. Then I would entertain a motion to go into executive session to discuss EMS personnel.
So, sorry.
Seven minutes early.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Wow, amazing.
This one goes on the calendar.